Seven four, we will now have a presentation by Brinkley, Sergeant Wigginton Architects, and Councilman Huntsaker on the City of Granberry Aquatic Facility Audit and Feasibility Study.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, City Manager. I would like to turn it over to, this is George Dynas and Stephen Springs. They know more about aquatic facilities than I ever wished to know. They'll go through this with you, and you can ask them some questions, and I'd be glad to answer any questions about our existing pool, if you have any afterwards.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Council, City Manager. It's good to be here tonight. My name is George Dynas with Councilman Huntsaker, and we do aquatic facility planning and design. And so we're working with Stephen Springs and Dwayne Brinkley with Brinkley Sergeant Wigginton Architects, looking at the existing condition as well as possible future options for the swimming pool. And so with that, we should have a presentation that will pull up here in just a second. There we go. And so as someone who grew up within the area, I was actually coaching summer swim team in the city of Denton from 1997 to 1999, and actually got to bring my team down here to swim at this pool, probably the summer of, I think it was the summer of 1998 or 1999, which was right after it opened. The construction drawings are dated late 1990s. And I actually saw Dana Volmer swim in this pool. So it was a nice little fun note. And so what we've done with our assessment here is we have looked at the need for aquatics within the city of Granberry and the surrounding communities. We've looked at some program elements to support that need, and then we've also looked at the cost implications of that, both on the capital as well as the operational side. And so, you know, here are some pictures of the existing Dana Volmer Municipal Swing Pool. You can see there in the top middle, there are some issues with, you know, cracking in the pool surface. There's some issues with, you know, the deck, you know, heaving and settling a little bit. The middle bottom picture there is the existing children's pool, and then the water slide there on the bottom right. And then also the mechanical equipment. You can see the pictures of the deck in the bottom left. You have the mechanical room, some corrosion there in the top right, as well as the existing support building there in the bottom middle picture. That's actually, right down the middle of that picture, there's a pretty large crack within the support building that you can actually see through the building, but just because of the age and condition of the support building. And so our firm typically assigns outdoor swing pools to have a lifespan in the neighborhood of 25 to 30 years. And so this pool actually falls right within this window where we would see it's time for some type of renovation or an eventual replacement. Some of the things that we consider when we look at renovation versus replacement, we look at the physical side of things, which is the documenting of the conditions that I just notated. But then we also look at the functional side, and that typically will ask the question, does this pool meet the needs of, you know, the aquatic users within the community? And what we find and know from national statistics is that 92% of people qualify themselves as recreational swimmers, and the main place that people are introduced to swimming is through outdoor aquatic facilities. And so on the functional side, you know, attendance has been declining in recent years, not just because of the pandemic has obviously hurt that a little bit, but then just in general, as other facilities have newer and updated facilities. And specifically with the bathhouse components, you know, this pool was built right before Stevens' firm and our firm started teaming together in the late 90s, early 2000s, and doing more modern municipal family aquatic centers, like in Cleburne Splash Station is an example of that. If you would go to that facility and compare it to this facility, it was only built a few years later, but the bathhouse is different. It had family changing rooms, it had a lap pool, plus it had a recreational pool. And so those are some of the things that we look at. So with the existing condition, physical condition of the pool, you know, we looked at, just to bring it up to, you know, a newer version of what it once was, you know, looking at pool deck, replacement gutter, piping, new filtrations, resurface the pool, put in a new water slide. We had that, you know, right about $1.2 million in repairs. Again, that would not do anything with the existing pool layout or pool functionality. Everything would remain the same. So that's an assessment of the existing conditions of the pool. Throughout this process, we also reached out to the community. So we launched a community survey early this year. We got over 200 responses. Almost half of the responders had children under the age of 18. The majority were residents of Granberry. And really what we found through the community survey, it wasn't statistically valid, but Aaron and his team pushed it out through various channels within the city. And we really found support for recreational aquatics, for water fitness classes, for swim lessons. And we found that the majority of folks, you know, some came to the existing swimming pool, others went to, you know, Stephenville or Cleburne or the Hood County YMCA for their aquatic offerings. And this is just an example of one of the questions and the responses that we got that shows the different features that we asked about, you know, would you prefer zero depth entry, water slides, children's areas, lap lanes, and other options like that. We also had an open-ended comment section on the survey where we found, you know, that the community respondents, you know, thought that it was important to continue to offer a municipal swimming pool here in Granberry. We had some responses notating the fact that the YMCA has the indoor competition pool, and that's where the Granberry Swim Team currently swims, and so that this facility could be more recreational focused. And we heard, you know, there's important features that should be included, such as, you know, ADA accessibility, you know, newer updated bathhouse and more shaded areas. We also had a community input meeting over at the conference center where we had our slideshow running on two different screens. We had some presentation boards as well, comment cards. And we found that in general, you know, there was support for more family amenities, support for that zero depth entry in children's pool. And then again, we heard the reiteration that we should include lots of shade within the facility. And so, once we looked at the existing condition of the pool, we came up with that, you know, $1.2 million to bring it up to a newer version of itself. We also started to look at a couple of different options, and we placed these on the existing site of where the pool is, mainly for size and scale, so you could see how big the options that we're showing are compared to the existing pool. And so, option one, we looked at about a 5,000 square foot leisure pool, plus a separate 1,800 square foot children's pool. And so this has a zero depth entry there in the main pool with a family slide. It's got a couple of newer updated water slides. It's got a children's crossing activity, which I'll have a picture of here in a minute. And then it also has a designated children's pool. The children's pool that's at the current facility, you know, it doesn't really meet the needs of many children outside of maybe a nine-month-old that can just sit in the pool. And so the children's features that we do now, you know, they have play features, they have sprays, they have interactivity. And so, you know, we want to include both passive and active water in any facility that we do. But what we really find is that children really like to have those active sprays and interactive elements within aquatic facilities. This would also include a new support building, most likely similar size to the one that you all have now. But some issues with the current site placement are, obviously, you know, parking could be an issue with a newer facility, as well as the proximity to the baseball softball field just there to the north. And actually, on the day of our site visit, there was a couple of baseballs and softballs that were within the pool fenced area. And so maybe, you know, providing some better separation from those if the site were to be moved. We have looked at estimated cost for a facility like this. Right now, we're seeing construction costs fairly volatile within the aquatic industry, as it is with industries as a whole. But when we priced these, the first part of this year was about five point, about five and a half million in construction, and just under seven and a half million for the overall project cost, where we include project design fees. We include escalation as well as contingencies. And some example images of what that could look like, you know, you have the interactive children's, there on the right, you have a zero depth entry with a family slide and shade on the left. The children's floatable crossing activity, a new and updated water slide tower. And the other thing that we considered is that that first option did not include lap lanes, and this pool has always included lap lanes. And so we wanted to show an option that was somewhat similar, but it included the ability to expand into some lap lanes. And so that's the primary difference between option one and option two. We included those three lap lanes there in the top, and so that provides a designated, you know, fitness swim area, programming area, you could do shallow, as well as deep-water aerobics, swim lessons. And so we wanted to make sure that we included some lap lanes in at least one of the options. We also moved the children's play feature into the zero depth entry, but we still included a separate children's pool there to the bottom right of the facility. As we started to look at cost on this one, we came to right about $7 million for construction, and then about $9 million for the overall project cost. One of the things that our firm has said for years is that really, you know, the basic outdoor family aquatic center, you know, you can get an outdoor pool for, you know, $5 to $6 million. And unfortunately, here, within the past couple of years, that cost has increased. And so now we're seeing that, you know, really, if you're going to do an outdoor family aquatic center, that you're probably going to start at $6 million at a minimum, and it's going to be in that range of, you know, six to nine, upwards of $10 million, depending on the number of pools, the number of features and things like that. The one thing that we did not want to do was to lower, was to go smaller than what you currently have, but also to make it more interactive and more usable. You know, having more shallow water means you have a higher capacity. You know, once you start to get into deep water, it lowers your capacity. And so we wanted to make sure that we had a higher capacity and a lot of different elements within the pool, so that people can progress through the facility as they age. So we not only have areas for ages two to four, but then they can go, you know, to the main pool by the time that they're three to six years old. At that time, they hit that 48-inch height requirement for the water slides, and they can get on the water slides, and then they can go to the deep water. And so we wanted to have a facility that was multipurpose, multi-use, multi-generational, and provides children the ability to really grow up within the facility. And then hopefully by the time they're 16, they come and work at the facility and have a good time. And so a couple of example images here, you know, there's a lap pool on the right. There is the West Irving Aquatic Center that we designed with Stevens' firm a few years ago that has a zero depth entry with a play structure and water slides. And again, just some other example elements of, you know, water slides and children's play features, as well as that updated designated children's pool, and then that crossing activity. One of the things we want to make sure to do is, again, I mentioned passive and active spaces, and that crossing activity is just a great active space that provides challenge and agility and skill to get across those floatable pads without falling into the water. And so it's great to keep kids active and moving while they're at the pool. And then lastly, we looked at an option. When the results from the community survey came back, one of the highest requested features was to incorporate a lazy river into the facility. And so we took another look at the different facility features. We wanted to keep the zero depth entry in the water slides, because those obviously had high survey responses geared toward those as well. But we wanted to look at that lazy river, and so this one has a lazy river component. And so, you know, this one came in at about $8.4 million for a total project cost. And again, size and scale, it fits within the confines of the existing facility, but as you can see, it's pretty tight. And so, but we at least wanted to show, you know, how that would fit within the existing site. And so a couple of example images, there's, you know, another children's play area along with a lazy river, as well as, you know, that could incorporate some water volleyball, or, you know, another example of a water slide tower. And so there's the three options, all next to each other, just so you can see how they fit on the site in comparison to one another. Obviously, option two was the largest, as well as the, had the highest capital cost for the three separate options. The other thing that we looked at was a couple of different site options, knowing that, you know, there is a change within Granberry with the growth rate, the number of people moving specifically to the north side, up 377. And so we looked in, we pulled the demographics for the existing location, within about a 30-minute drive time, which is what we see is about typical for outdoor aquatics in the summertime. And we found that the north side of town, it actually overdoubles the number of people, just population density within 30 minutes. And that's primarily because you're, you know, you're pulling from that southwest side of Fort Worth and the Benbrook area, as well as the income was fairly stable, but the income within that region was definitely higher than the national average, which is about $53,000 per household right now. And so we also pulled the demographics for age distribution. And so the top right box there shows the age distribution, you know, anything that is below the blue line, or the, hold on, my eyesight is not as good as it once was. So yeah, so Granberry is the red line, the blue line is the national average. And so anywhere that the red line is below the blue line is where Granberry is below or above the national average. So a little bit of a higher aging population. But you can see the growth rate there, you know, for the 30-mile radius, as well as for the city itself is fairly high. And so that's where we feel that, you know, you don't want to just go back with the same-sized facility, but that you want to plan for some future growth within the options that we showed. And then I mentioned the other area of facilities, from Stephenville to Cleburne to the Hood County YMCA. You know, you have a water park up in White Settlement. You have, Burleson has an aquatic center. And so you're really in a nice little spot where there's not a whole lot of competition. You know, anybody is going to have to drive to these different facilities. And so we feel that, you know, based on those different sites, that there could be some differences within the number of people that attend, if you go with the existing location, or if you go with, you know, a site on the north side of the city. And so that's where our operational analysis comes into play. So we have not only the construction cost, the project cost, but the capacity for each of those various options. We have projections on attendance, you know, in that, you know, 35,000 to 40,000 person range per summer. And a cost recovery, you know, in that 60% to 70% range, I would say that that's fairly common for outdoor aquatics within this area. One of the main things that we heard on the community survey and the open-ended comments was that we want the facility to remain affordable to residents of Granberry. And so, you know, making sure that it's priced appropriately, so that, you know, maybe you have a resident versus non-resident rate, but making sure that it is affordable to residents, as they said, within the survey. And so, you know, I think the two key things to highlight again is that the site can and will play an issue with that, specifically if you're looking to draw people from that southwest Fort Worth area, because that additional, you know, 10 minutes to get from the north side to the existing pool location can, you know, make a break, a 30-minute drive time into a 40-minute drive time, or 25 into 35. And then the other thing to mention is just the, as I mentioned earlier, the capital costs are fluctuating. And so, you know, we've priced those out in, you know, early $20, $22, but we've also seen that those have increased a little bit since that time. So with that, that is a quick snapshot into the work that our firms have done here in the past couple of months. So, you know, our goal is to provide you good, solid information so that you can make, you know, sound decisions about the future of the swimming pool. And so with that, would welcome any questions for myself or for Aaron at this time.
Mr. Reiner.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for the presentation. I appreciate that. My girls grew up doing competition swim right here in Granberry and for Granberry High School and the SEALs, so I am a swim mom.
Okay, great.
I do have some questions, so bear with me. I saw a lot of projections, but what I didn't see, based on your numbers, do you have a projected start date? I know this is just a presentation, but you have to base these numbers off of something. And as volatile as you say the market is right now, what's the projected start date if we were to base construction on these numbers?
So those would be in today's dollars, but we have also included one year of escalation within those numbers. And so that would get us until, you know, essentially one year from today with those, or one year from early. So early 2023 would have been the projected start date when those numbers were developed. The one thing that we do see with aquatic facility development is that you need about six to eight months for design, and then another, you know, nine to 11 months for construction. And so, you know, we would see that the earliest that a new facility could open in Granberry would be for that 2024 summer season, if funding was acquired, a design team was hired, and then design started pretty quickly.
Okay. And then, this is, this might actually be a question for Tammy. I think she's in the audience. The projections on cost recovery, does that include tourism dollars at all? If it were to be on the, you know, the Fort Worth side of town, we probably would bring in a different crowd. Does that include those projections? And I apologize if that was in there and I just missed it, but...
That is correct. Within our numbers, we could refine it a little bit for, to be more site-specific. Right now, we've taken a more generalized approach, but yeah, we've definitely accounted that, yeah, you would have some folks driving from that 30-minute radius outside of Granberry.
Okay. So we've got Granberry and outside of Granberry.
Correct.
And this is probably a Chris question. What are we looking at funding this with? It's, all it takes is money, right?
All it takes is money, and the last legislative session required that if you want to take on debt to build recreational facilities, it's got to go to the voters. So you would need to put this on the ballot in November. So that's a whole nother conversation with our financial advisor.
That was all I had. I think you answered the other question I had. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Wiley.
Mr. Thank you. If you go with one of these options or something like that, where you're totally replacing the pool, is there really any significant difference in cost doing the current location versus another location?
So I think that's dependent upon the location. Obviously, now, you know, well, you would have demolition either way, because you would have to demo the existing pool. You know, if you rebuild there, if you rebuild it somewhere else, you'd still have to, you know, demolish the existing facility and then repurpose that. The thing with a new site is that, you know, you would have, you know, site construction costs, such as, you know, utilities, parking, and all of that. And so I think it would probably take a little bit more of a detailed study, but we could see it being fairly close on both, just because there's complexities involved with, you know, demolition of the existing facility, rebuild additional parking, or looking at a new site where you're starting clean and, you know, have to bring utilities to the site, landscaping, parking, and all of those issues that come up.
Thank you.
Land cost, too.
Yes, and land cost as well, if the, you know, if you look at a parcel of land that the city does not currently own.
So these, the numbers that you have do not include land cost?
They do not include land acquisition at this time.
Land acquisition or scraping the ground or preparing it?
We have included a demolition allowance as well as site construction cost within our figures.
Yes, sir.
Did you include parking?
Yes, that's correct. Parking is included as well.
I'll let everybody ask questions, and I got some closing ones.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Vale.
Great presentation. Love all the designs. I'd like to have one in my backyard.
Option two?
I was thinking about, you mentioned the Y. Obviously, we've got a really nice YMCA. We obviously got a city beach and a little splash zone area there that has been full, really, the last couple of weeks. When I looked at the page on all the renovations, are those our immediate needs? I mean, I guess my question is, is the pool functional and safely operational as it is today, and will that get us through the season?
Correct, yes.
Kind of thinking about what our immediate needs are.
Correct. And in terms of immediate life safety needs, we did not find any of those within our assessment. But it was more, you know, if the pool continues in operation, these areas are going to need to be addressed.
Sure. Understand. So the water slide replacement cost, is that what that is? That's in there, the $150,000?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And underwater lights, $15,000, is that rewiring a lot of things? I mean, that just seemed high to me.
Yeah, that was replacing the underwater lights. There was a couple that were not functioning, as well as there was some rewiring that would need to be done as well.
That's, okay. That's important in a pool, obviously.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes.
Other questions? Mr. Kaufman?
I'd just like to add that currently, we're not running the lights because it's not safe. We've got them disconnected.
I have some questions on the numbers. The site options, I'm probably just not understanding this, but Site 1, population and then the income, 6731. And then I'm looking at the next pages where you talk about the expense budget and projected revenues of, you know, 298, or the expense budget, 298, the revenue projection of 205. A $93,000 loss for option one. Option two is $99,000. Option three is $127,000. I was just trying to compare that back to the numbers, the 66 and the 68, which I couldn't understand. We doubled the population, we doubled the, is that usage or is that just population?
That's just population.
Okay.
Yes. And so depending upon if the pool's on, at the existing location or on the north side, you know, you just have, you shift that 30-minute drive time from central Granberry to northern Granberry, and so you have a wider, you cast a wider net of folks that are within 30 minutes of the pool to draw from. I still, you know, think that the majority of folks would, of the attendance would come, you know, within probably a 15 to 20-minute drive time. But, you know, shifting it north, you're going to definitely pull some of those that are closer to 30 minutes away, and there's more people in that direction.
And so you're assuming that option one, two, and three, even though you showed them that could be built over here, what is, are you basing this on the 150,000 population or the, yeah, the 150,000 population or the 72,000 population?
So we actually based it more so on the 150 than on the 70s. So we would probably see that if it was, we would see a little bit lower cost recovery rate and lower attendance if it was built to the existing site as opposed to the north side location.
Okay. And if these numbers hold, it would be about half the attendance, 72,000 versus 154.
Well, we actually don't see a direct correlation between density and attendance. You know, we're still going to have, because a lot of those people are coming, you know, within a 15 to 20-minute drive time instead of a 30-minute drive time. And so the farther out that we go, the less percentage of people we draw. So we still draw the majority of people from within 15 to 20 minutes. But then we might only draw, you know, a half percent or X number of percentage from that 30-minute drive time. So we still feel that, you know, this facility would probably have 25,000 to 30,000 in attendance if it was at the existing site. But then moving it to the north side, you know, you can draw that extra 10,000 people.
Well, Mr. Kaufman has challenged me to find anybody anywhere that makes money on a pool, and I'm not going to take him up on that challenge, but I would like to...
A municipal pool.
A municipal pool. But I would like to have, you know, we'd need some pretty good, we would need to be able to set clear expectations on what this would cost us, both from a construction standpoint and from an ongoing basis. So...
Correct.
Appreciate the effort and appreciate the information as well. Thank you. Yes, sir.
I'm Stephen with Brinkley, Sergeant Wigginton. And to kind of layer on top of that, I think it's important to know that this first blush at these options, these are all 30,000 foot options. So much like George mentioned on the, on the cost side and, and to your question, sorry, I can't read that far, but you ask, you know, what is, what is this projecting to? When are we starting? Well, the, the short answer is we don't know. And so it's hard for us to project cost because right now the crystal ball is as fuzzy as it's ever been. The best we can do is say, this is what we think it is now. And likewise with this performance, the sort of financial performance of the facility, we would recommend not only would the construction costs kind of get reevaluated and updated once, once there's more clarity and timeline, but once there's clarity in site location, it would make sense and scope to kind of update this number and get, to get more detail, like what I think you're grasping for, and we can't quite answer it yet, is those are the big directions that we feel like as a consultant, that we need input from is, is time, is scope, is location. Then we can start fine tuning both the budget and the performa numbers. But anything you get from any contractor today is going to be qualified with a big fat asterisk on pricing. I mean, we all see it in the news every night, right, about inflation. Well, the reality is, construction costs don't follow the consumer price index. They're usually more substantial than the consumer price index. So let that sink in for a minute. You know, time is literally money, you know, right now. So I don't want to scare you guys, but I think it's important that you have our eyes wide open as to what our confidence level is in what we're presenting and what, what we can hear from you guys that will help us fine tune that as, as best as possible going forward. So for example, if you were going to target a November bond versus say, May of 23 or November 23 or whatever, there's going to be a time value cost of money in each of those scenarios. So it's scope, time and money, like every project, it's just, it's just magnified these days. So I hope that helps you in, in your deliberations.
Well, we certainly did not invite you here to waste your time. We have, we have a great, this is an interest in our community. It's an interest at the, at this level as well. Yes, sir.
So I've got a couple of questions. In your existing facility audit, I just want to dot a few i's and cross a few t's. Is the pool ADA compliant currently?
Yeah, so is, with the ADA compliance, so if the pool is less than 300 perimeter feet, then it would need one means of accessible entry. If it is greater than that, it would need two means. And so with the ADA compliant lift that is in place, it is ADA compliant.
Okay, so we have one lift and that's all we need?
I believe so. I have to check back on the, the exact perimeter. I have that in a report that I, I've written, so I can, I can double check that just to make sure.
So another question I have to do with the audit is, does the existing pool equipment meet state standards as far as pumping capacities and things like that? The turnover rate of the pool, those standards, did y'all look into that? And is that being met?
We did, yes. So we looked at several different standards. We looked at, you know, sanitation and disinfection, which is more on the operational side. You know, do you have one part per million of chlorine within the pool when it is operating? But we also looked at the turnover rate, and this falls under the pre-1999 pool standard, which would be a turnover rate of eight hours, which it was compliant based on the pump, size of the, the pipe and the filtration.
Okay. Those are important to me because we're running a pool this year and I've got a pool expert that's done an audit. I need to check these t's, cross the t's and dot the i's. So I had some questions, you answered them in your presentation. Thank you for that. Did you consider our rapid growth? I know you was looking at 4% growth. You know, we've increased about 50% in the last five years. And I'm, I'm anticipating that to occur again. And I was wondering if this pool is going to be big enough for the growth in 10 years? And just making sure y'all looked at that, so.
Yeah, we did account for that and we had multiple talks with, with Aaron and his team about that. And so I think that as I was, you know, just looking at the options and the cost, I think that's really why the, you know, a pool in that five and a half to six and a half million dollar range for the total project cost, we feel would not be sized appropriately because of that growth. And so we had to account for that. And so that's why the options got a little bit larger in scope due to the, the growth.
If, if, if we were to simply repair the existing pool with all the recommendations you made, approximately a million, million and a half dollars, what do you think the expected life of the pool would be after those repairs are made?
Yeah, so as I mentioned, we usually see that lifespan of 25 to 30 years for an outdoor pool. You know, if you have that renovation in that 18 to 22 year range, you know, it typically can get another 10, you know, 10 plus years out of the renovation with the caveat that, you know, the ground and the, the pool structure is, is stable. And so, you know, you might want to have an additional assessment done by a structural engineer just to ensure that the, the pool is structurally sound, that, you know, that when you take the plaster off and put new plaster on, that it's not just going to crack and delaminate because the pool structure is shifting. But typically we find, you know, an additional 10 years. And, and getting to 40 years with an outdoor pool is not unheard of. And so we could definitely see that, you know, if you spend that money, that, you know, the pool could be functional for another, another decade and a half.
Okay. Besides being undersized for the amount of kids we're going to have.
Right, correct.
So our school system's expecting to go from, from 7,700 students to 10,000 students by the end of this decade. So that's a lot of youth that need to be dealt with in our community. And so that's something we need to be looking at.
Yeah, and that's the one thing that the existing pool does, does not really accommodate well, just with this old style of pool. You know, you have, you have shallow water starting at three feet and then deep water, you know, down to 11 or 12 feet. And so that, you know, child six and under really doesn't have a, a place at this facility.
And how big a track of land would you recommend for the largest option that you sized here?
So we're looking about four, four and a half acres in total land. And that includes parking efficiencies and all of that.
All right.
Chris, I think he can make it as big as he wants, as long as we have the land, right?
We've got land. It's not where he wants it, but we've got land. Now, we, we are looking at, you know, out in the area that you identified, there's some possibilities there, but we just need to know how many acres we need, you know?
Sure.
Four to five, it sounds like.
Correct.
Last, last question. When you were talking to the public, do you think this project would be bondable? I mean, the people that you were interacting with, were they supportive of the city spending those dollars towards recreation activities?
Yeah, I think in general, through the community survey and the public input session that, you know, we heard from a lot of young families and those are typically the ones that would be, you know, the users of this type of facility. And so I got the impression that there would be support for the facility, specifically within the open-ended comments of the survey.
Okay, thank you. Really appreciate y'all working with us and having those meetings. And I know Aaron and his staff have been very involved. And I know that you tried to get as much public involvement as you could. You know, I saw the survey was 200 people. That's pretty good. ARX Commission had about the same results, so.
Okay, that's good.
We're, we're happy to get 200 if we can get them. So thank y'all so much for all you do for us.
All right.
Mr. Mayor. I had one last question. It's about the budget. You're projecting that it would lose about $100,000 a year. And Aaron, this is probably for you. What is our current pool cost?
Loss?
Cost or loss? I don't know what our income, just the whole same, same scenario.
About $50,000 total loss per year. We, we made, so revenue on admissions and concessions in 2021 was 31,000. Expenses in operations, not counting labor, was about 39,000. Labor expense for concessions and guards, about 43,000. Do the math, about, about $50,000 loss.
So what kind of attendance do we have? Your numbers are like much, much lower than what these projections are.
On average, eight to nine per day. That, that's, everyone's excited when the pool opens. It tends to fade off a little bit longer in the summer.
Other questions, counsel? Thank you, Aaron. Thank you, guys. That was an excellent presentation. You set a very high bar. We appreciate it.